Central Berkshire. Please note this meeting is being audio and video recorded. Motion shown or examples, they may be omitted or amended as needed. Okay, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Dr. Craft Rees. Dr. Everwine.
Here.
Charlotte Crane.
Here.
Mr. Emerson.
Here.
Mr. Farrell.
Yep.
Ms. Ladozori.
Here.
Ms. Lounsbury.
Yep.
Stephen Marantz.
Here.
Elizabeth Oaks.
Here.
Rich Peters.
Here.
Robert Ronzio. Mr. Stewart.
Here.
Sarah Tucker. Kimberly Weatherall.
Yeah.
We have a quorum. All right. First up, any responses from the audience? Seeing none, okay. Student affairs, I see Daniel's here today. Daniel.
Oh, I have a lot to catch you guys up on. November 4th, this is way back, we had our FST happening ceremony during the morning in our auditorium, as well as during the night. We had forty-three new members join. We had our winter play, The Complete Works of Shakespeare, November 8th and 9th, and we also had Turkey Fest on November 21st. We had the NHS help out with parent-teacher conferences during November 7th and 12th. And then we also had our first snow day on December 5th. We had Light Up the Holidays, December 7th, with the mixed choir and band, as well as the Dalton Ballet Studio. The NHS Empty Bowls, or no, sorry, not NHS Empty Bowls. NHS Empty Bowls is coming up January 21st. And winter sports are in full blast with Nordic Ski had their first meet last week, and they were on the bridge whether or not they were going to have it with snow. And Fritz Sanders came in overall first to start off in the lead. Senior mentors are preparing for next freshman senior activity, as last one went really well during our first quarter. And what we're trying to do with the freshmen right now is try to acclimate them to high school, help them with skills, with relationships, and really build them up so they can go through high school collectively. The mock trial team has their first competition on the first, or on the 13th, so. Sorry, I couldn't make the last meetings.
Oh, that's fine. Any, any questions for Daniel? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We have, we do it right now, Paul. So can I get Tony Pagliurow to step up? And we're gonna, if it's okay with the committee before I do this, we're gonna move, there's some awards for the students. I want to bring it up to the front of the meeting, if that's okay with everybody, if anybody has any issues with that. But if you'd like to.
Yeah, is that okay?
This is Tony Pagliurow from the Dalton Green Committee.
Good evening, thank you for having me here. I just preface my remarks by giving thanks to the students that participated. And the awards we gave, are going to be giving out tonight, there were some twenty participants. I also want to thank Bonnie Conania, the art teacher at the high school, for saying this, and Aaron Robb, the principal, for his help in having this award tonight. The Green Committee is in partnership with Blue Strike Consultancy to create a Climate Action Plan, the CAP. And this is in line with the state's 2050 decarbonization goal of addressing climate change. And so towards that end, our committee several months ago wanted a logo. And we looked to the high school, and the high school came through. And so we have three final, two runners-up and one finalist. And we will be using their logos in the future, so this is a lifelong achievement. I want to say one last thing regarding our committee. Kudos to the high school, we submitted a survey, enough of 250 respondents, close to one-fourth of them were high school students. And I thought that was just magnificent, thanks to the Science Department, against Principal Robb for helping us. Okay, if I may, I'd like to read the plaque. And this plaque is both for Grace and for Ella. So Grace Ratzek, Ella Reardon. Congratulations, your artwork has been chosen by the Green Dalton Committee as runner-up to represent the Dalton Climate Action Plan. Your submission was outstanding among the many submissions, as it uniquely represents our efforts to create a sustainable future for this community. We are proud to incorporate the efforts of one of our younger citizens into a document that represents our concern for future generations. Though your submission was not chosen for this project, we would like to hold it for possible future projects. Congratulations once again, signed by our Chair and our Town Manager. Grace and Ella, could you come up, please? Grace? Congratulations. Congratulations.
It's a practice for graduation.
Congratulations. Thank you. Ashlyn Roach, congratulations. Your artwork has been chosen by the Green Dalton Committee to be incorporated into the town's Climate Action Plan. Your submission was judged from many entries to be the best representation of the Dalton community and our town's commitment to a sustainable future. We are proud to incorporate the efforts of one of our younger citizens into a document that represents our concern for future generations. We invite your involvement in the process that leads us to a final version of this artwork in our Climate Action Plan. And you have before you tonight, black and white, and that certainly doesn't do justice to the colorized versions that we're working on presently. The artwork will be an important component in this presentation of our Climate Action Plan to the town residents. Congratulations and thanks to you, your class, and teachers for providing this lasting legacy of artwork for our project.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony, and thanks to the Green Committee, Aaron and the art teacher, excellent stuff. The other thing on my, part of my agenda is the filling the Dalton vacancy. And if there are any objections to me, I'd like to move that up to the front of the meeting as well to get our committee completely filled. Any objections to that? Okay, so we have, I think John, John Mason just walked in, I think so, right, John? If you would like to read a statement, that would be great. You know, we might ask questions of you as well, you want to step up here? That's good, yeah.
John Mason, Dalton resident. Discussing with a lot of folks in town about being on the school committee. Decided to reach out to, we would do a write-in and get my level of interest out there that something is interesting serving on. In my many community groups and boards. I am the president of the Country Club, so sort of on the school board for St. Agnes. The founder and president of the Boop Powell Memorial Fund, which gives thousands and thousands of dollars back to the community for scholarships and the CRA. For projects to make our community better, so. That's me, that's John Mason in a nutshell. Answer any questions, if anybody has any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for John? And I get it, yeah, yeah.
What prompted you to decide that school committee was, was something you'd be interested in?
I'm involved in the community, so just another piece of, when you, when you live in a community, I think you have to look back in seeing that there was a need. Something like I said, I'm on the school board for St. Agnes as well. This would be a good opportunity to help contribute.
Anybody else? Seeing none, can I give a motion?
So moved. Motion to nominate.
Be it resolved, let me have a please.
It resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee appoint John Mason in the school committee as a representative from the town of Dalton.
Can I get a second? I got a second, okay. Any discussion, any questions? Okay, I don't, we do, we need a roll call for this? Yeah, roll call, vote, please.
Charlotte Crane.
Yes.
Dr. Everwine.
Yes.
Mr. Emerson.
Yes.
Mr. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Ladozori.
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury.
Yes.
Stephen Marantz.
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks.
Yes.
Rich Peters.
Yes.
Robert Ronzio. Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall.
Yes.
Congratulations, we have to come up and, we have to swear you in. Take a seat and vote with us. It's going to go up and then I. And I, you know.
Just to say, hey, what do you do?
Robert rules guy. It's not all, yeah, moderator.
It's a guy, to the head of the tradition. To speak to this guy, sure do, he has dealt with before in Dalton. There's been. I call him. The one, yeah.
Well, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah. Have a seat, welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is the financial reports. We had some warrants previously signed, and we have some gifts and donations. First up is approval of fundraiser for Wacona Regional High School's National Honor Society.
Be it resolved that Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the National Honor Society's fundraiser, empty bowls on January 21st, 2025, at Wacona to raise money for the local food charities.
Second.
Motion second, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up is authorization of scholarship donations.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the following donations totaling $22,498, as recommended by the treasurer. It's $11,998 donated from Berkshire Ticonic on behalf of the Sadie and Charles Boraski Memorial Scholarship Fund. $10,500 donated from Julie England, Brian Strahild for the Class of 1970 Scholarship Fund.
Motion is second, any questions on this one? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up, acceptance of donations from Berkshire Ticonic on behalf of Central Berkshire.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the following donations totaling $12,100 from the Berkshire Ticonic on behalf of the Berkshire Regional School District, as recommended by the district treasurer. The amounts of $6,000 awarded to CBRSD Craneville and Kittredge Library Updates. $6,100 awarded to CBRSD Early Childhood Coordinator for First Things First, Part Three.
Second.
A motion is second, any questions and discussion on this one? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, acceptance of donations from seven towns educational enrichment programs, steep grants.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the following donations totaling $9,443 from the Berkshire Ticonic Steep Grant, as recommended by the district treasurer. $1,000 awarded to Kittredge Elementary School, Grade Five Science with Mass Audubon. $3,500 awarded to Wacona Regional High School Civility Assembly 2025. $995 awarded to CBRSD Mindfulness, supporting students and staff with combined. $600 awarded to Nescus Regional Middle School Family Literacy Night. $1,348 awarded to Wacona Regional High School McBeth Performance. $1,000 awarded to Kittredge Elementary School, Grade Three Science with Mass Audubon. And $1,000 awarded to Wacona Graphic Novels with WRHS.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions or comments on this one? Yeah, let's.
Please get the buy it up into the amounts versus the, and the groups that they're giving out to.
Good question. Anybody know, Greg?
So these are actually grants that our staff members can apply for, so they put in what they think they'll need. So most of these are right around the same amount they requested.
So for example, it'd be like the, whoever's in charge of the, the Wacona High School Civility Assembly would apply for this grant specifically?
Yes.
Okay.
Others? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, acceptance of a donation to Wacona WRHS shop classroom.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts a donation of new welding equipment from Mr. Harry A. Downs Jr. for the Wacona Regional High School's shop classroom, as recommended by the district treasurer.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, any discussion or questions on this one? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Next up, Secretary's report. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 12th, 2024, can I get a motion? Motion to approve? Can I get a second?
I have a second, I'd like to amend them if I can.
Oop, that's up next. Do we have any discussion about that? We got a motion, a motion and a second, so any discussion?
Yeah, as far as the, under the roll call section, the, the members that were here, there was members of the audience that were here, a lot of, the people here that are listed are the people that spoke on the sips and dips, the, the building principals, but we also had Colleen from Hinsdale, who was vying for the seat as well, members of Hinsdale government were there. So I think they should be mentioned as well, and I don't know the best way to do that. If we want to list everybody who spoke individually or groups of people, or, but I think they should be recognized as well.
I think they were noted in there as speaking, but not all of them, like Sean wasn't, didn't speak, so. He wasn't listed as speaker. But, I don't know. So you want to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended from your regulations?
Including the other people that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that okay, Beth, you can add?
That's fine, yeah, whatever you guys want to do. So I'm adding the list that you sent, do you want to read the list, though, Dave, who you want to, who you want me to add?
Send the list.
So you wanted Bob Graves. Right, Bob Graves.
Bob Graves, Viv Mason.
Yep.
Sean Gallagher.
Sean Gallagher.
So my only, my only question, and I talked to Dave about this, are we going to start listing people who don't speak? So that, so the people that speak, you see what I'm saying?
Or in there, I know.
No, no, also present, I mean, Bob spoke, Viv spoke, with, Colleen spoke.
Colleen spoke, there was members that did speak. Make sure that people are.
You just kind of got to figure out what, how you want that listed, because what, if they're not speaking.
Right.
Do you want me to list?
And no, we don't need to list people who aren't speaking.
So list, so list the people.
Because we'll have to get names from people who are out there if we make a present of it.
Right.
Right.
Then they might leave before we get their name.
And then when we get to a public hearing, there could be.
Right.
An extended list, so.
Right, and what happens usually with it, just so people know, when people will speak from the audience, I do have a piece of paper that they sign, and then we have their, the name on record, then I can put it in, if they speak. And that's fine, I can put them in if they speak. If they don't speak, then we'd have to list everybody. So it's, you know, whatever you guys want, I just want to make that point.
No, that's a good point.
Yeah, so we'll list who speaks. And then if they don't, if they're here, they're just members of the audience. And I'll make sure members of the audience are also, you know, like that statement is listed in the, does that sound okay?
Sounds good to me.
We're going to motion to approve the minutes as amended with that list of people.
Yes, second.
Okay, so all in favor, say, any discussion about that? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Next up is the superintendent's report.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. I am going to present the Central Berkshire Regional School District initial budget to you in collaboration with my finance director, Greg Bueno. Just a couple of words about the budget itself, and how we, how this budget comes to be. This is the FY26, what we call initial budget. It is the very first step of our budget. Because we are a regional school district, this budget process for us begins pretty early in the year, as you can probably tell. A couple of things that are important to note is that because this budget process for us begins early, our numbers are pretty unknown right now. So you might be asking yourself, well, how do we come up with our numbers? So things like Chapter 70, we base those numbers on last year's numbers. So this is a very, this budget is a very, it's in the very early stages, I just want to caution everybody about that. We do not anticipate that the budget that you see will be our final budget that we vote on. Many of these numbers, again, are. We, an example of that would be Chapter 70 usually increases every year, we did not build in the increase. A couple of things also, like you might be asking yourself, as I'm saying this, like, well, when do these numbers come out? So typically, Chapter 70, those numbers come out at the end of January. Very specifically, we're expecting that on January 22nd, with the release of the governor's budget, we'll have a better, more solid idea of those numbers. We, as part, the public hearing that's scheduled with Tracy Novick, she should, or hopefully, we've, we are, do have a meeting with her. We're hoping that she will be able to give us a better sense of those numbers. There are, there are other unknowns, another unknown, and you'll hear our finance director speak to this a little bit, are our insurance rates. So for example, our insurance rates right now are looking fairly high. We're basing that information on Berkshire Health Group. Again, end of January, we'll have more solid numbers. So this is a very preliminary budget. How do we go about coming up with this budget and, and what is the process that we use? I'm going to go to the goals slide. So, so the goals slide is a little bit of an outline, and I'll speak to those in just a minute. But what I wanted you to know, and I think is important for everybody here to understand, is we rely very heavily on our principals to give us information around what is needed. And what we did this year as part of the process is we asked them to fill out a form. And I just want to, we just, part of the information that we asked our principals to include on that form, first, we asked them to list their, their request priority, we asked them to prioritize. We asked them to list what they felt was most important. We asked them to provide us with data to support their proposal. We asked them to align their proposal to their school improvement plan, the district improvement plan, and the district strategic plan. We asked them to, to communicate to us the impact on students. And we also asked them to, to give us information around the cost and where they would anticipate that resource coming from. So this, principals could have anywhere from probably two to five requests. Just so you know, following this format, both Mike, Greg, and I, and the building principal met. We discussed their priorities. We, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't just say, oh, all of these priorities will appear in the operational budget. We had a collaborative conversation around what we were going to prioritize and what would be included in the operational budget. So I just, I just want to make sure everyone has a good understanding of how, what is in the budget and how it came to be. One other thing to know also is that we do ask principals to talk to their teachers and to talk to staff about this budget, so that it's not just principals that have input into the budget, but it's also teachers that have input into this budget. Another component of this is we also meet with the CBA, the, the Central Berkshire Union, and we have a conversation with them about what is in this budget as well, and we get input from them. So it's a, it's a collaborative, I would say, collective process. The other only thing I wanted to mention that you're going to see in this budget is we do a pretty, when I say we, it's a stretch on the we, because I think it's a we, but I know there are some individuals that I work closely with that do a bulk of the work. We look pretty carefully at things like scheduling, and we try to reallocate resources wherever possible, where we think it's going to benefit students. So scheduling is a component of that. I know, for an example, is Mike sitting next to me and Principal Robb, who's, who's in our audience, did some pretty intense looking at scheduling at the high school to increase efficiencies, or not just increase efficiencies, but to provide some resources that we feel students need. So I'm going to go back to the goals. So basically, in a nutshell, I think keeping all those things in mind, our goal, one of our goals is to provide students with educational programming and instruction that upholds high standards for our students. High standards includes the, the state identify, identified standards and frameworks. If you're new to the committee, you, you may not have heard me talk about tiered intervention. The way we think of, what tiered intervention is, is we think of, we think of instruction in terms of three different, in three different categories. Tier one, which is generalized classroom instruction. Tier two would be students that we've identified as needing a little extra help. And tier three would be those students who we need, who we feel need substantially separate instruction. How we identify this is through our benchmarks and through data, observation, classroom instruction, report cards, et cetera. So we want to have strong systems, both academically, emotionally, and socially, and all those different things, and all those different areas. Secondly, we want to make sure that our budget is collaborative, which is what I just spoke to. We want to make sure teachers are included. Importantly, the finance subcommittee is, is a, is our sort of, is a key component of how this budget ends up looking and sounding and feeling for all of us. I will say, they take this very seriously, we take feedback and input from them very seriously. And it is a, it is a process that we, that we work through with them, and we have already presented this budget to them. We have received some feedback from them. And we also encourage school committee members, even, you know, if you're, you know, if you're just home and you end up with a question, because there's a lot of information to contact us directly about any of this. And we will offer a question, a question and answer session at the end as well. One other, oh yeah, one other thing too, I didn't want to forget to mention, is that I, around this time, I think that's included it in the school committee packet. I always send a letter to the towns, and I offer to have a presence at their select board meetings to talk about district priorities, to talk about the budget. Many of the towns do invite me, so far I've been invited to a couple. Some want me to be there more than others. But that's a big component of this process as well, so they have an idea of what our priorities are, why, what is, you know, what does it look like, what is, what does instruction look like on an everyday basis at Central Berkshire? Because unless you're really involved with the school district, or you have children in the school district, you might not know. So generally, at those meetings, that'll be Greg and I, or sometimes also, I would say, our Chair, Rich Peters, goes to those meetings. Just so you know, all school committee members are always invited to those select board meetings at any time, and especially if they're focused on finance.
So this slide, a little delay, this slide shows the, where we're kind of sitting right now with our FY26 initial budget gross fund. So this is using the operating funds, revolving accounts, grants. Where that is right now is $37,153,617. That's a year-over-year increase of 4.13, or a variance of just about 1.4 million. Just so you know where we were last year when we finished the budget, our overall gross operating was about 5.5% over year-over-year. So we're starting this year at 4.1. This slide shows the operating increases and decreases that are in the operating budget currently. This is everything excluding salaries, we'll look at salaries on the next page. But to go over some of these, we are, we do have some contractual or fixed contracts or fixed rates. For one is our pupil transportation. We are going into year four of a five-year contract. We see a three percent increase each year, so it's about fifty thousand dollars for that. Berkshire County Retirement, that is the pension for anybody that's not part of mass teachers. So custodians, cafeteria, paraprofessionals, they are part of Berkshire County Retirement. That is a rate they set for us. So we're seeing about a twenty thousand dollar increase year-over-year. One thing to know on this slide, when you're looking, anywhere you see an asterix, that means with last year's budget, we offset some of our expenses by prepaying with rural aid, last year's per, grant from the state, about four hundred thousand. So some of these lines were not in last year's budget. At this point, you're not seeing a three hundred thousand dollar increase in other insurances. We have to add that money back into that line. I do have a ten percent increase in that. That's for property insurance and property insurance. So there's a ten percent increase, but the line is going up by three twenty-nine, because we have to add that back in. Health and dental, this is a large increase this year, so it's just over a million dollars. Right now, we are thinking the active health insurance is going to come in a little under fifteen. We'll know on Monday, January twenty-seventh. I think the most it will be is fifteen. So we're not, I don't think it's going to be much off of that, but that's a large increase. One thing to know, it's not something that's specialized to Central Berkshire. I think it's happening across the nation, that health and, health costs are going up. Last year, we came in at the end with about a seven percent increase. Retiree health insurance, that one's different than the active in the dental. They go calendar year. So our retirees, their rates go from January to December. So they did see an increase of twenty percent this month in January. I'm thinking there will be another increase next year, so I had to go a little, I went a little higher than twenty, so it's sitting at twenty-five percent for next year. In dental, I have a five percent. We have not seen an increase in our dental health insurance. I don't think we'll see an increase in our dental, but I wanted to put something at least in for the initial budget. On the net last, the next one is charter school assessment. That is set by the state. We will see that when Leslie was saying chapter seventy numbers. That is our state aid that comes from the state. They also set our charter, charter school assessment. So it could be a thirty thousand increase. It could be a little less, a little more. We'll know as we move through January. Another place we're seeing some large increases is special education costs. We have students that go to, that are placed because of their IEP needs outside of Central Berkshire. So we did increase our out-of-district tuition line by seventy-five thousand. And we also have many students that are out of district and into district that have specialized transportation on their IEP. That increase of one hundred and thirty-five is pretty much meeting our actual expenditures this current year. Every year, we do see more kids going on, being added to that list for specialized transportation, and those rates are not going down. Prepaid transportation, that is another piece that we're adding back in, because we prepaid it last year. That is for our field trips and our athletics. So there is a three percent increase in there, but we're adding that line back in, because we prepaid it last year. Chromebook and computer renewal, there's a, we added amount of a hundred and twenty thousand. This is something we've always paid out of rural aid, but with the uncertainty of rural aid, and we, it would be best practice to put this in our operating budget, because it's something, we are a one-to-one Chromebook district, kindergarten through twelfth grade. We have not had this line in our budgets, but I think it's best practice that we try to get that in there. The last piece is the technology, software and hardware. That is something we're looking at, especially, this is Assistant Superintendent Hennall and Director Sturgis, our tech director, they're looking, especially at our software lines. There are some software that we're using for educational purposes that we probably could move away from. So in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be looking at that closer. But where it sits right now is about a forty thousand dollar increase. That last little chunk is supplies, utilities, and building, building maintenance. We do have a new snow removal contract this year. We saw a ten percent increase. But the, we added, we had to add the PIP, that is our property, property equipment improvement plan, fifteen thousand. But then we did add ten thousand for field maintenance. I know field maintenance, especially here at Nescus, that is not really for our varsity programs. We have not had line items for that, so we thought this was a good starting place to at least try to get ten thousand in there for that. We do have one decrease. So the band and principal and interest we've been paying year-over-year out of our operating budget, that is moving to capital this year. We are pretty confident we're gonna go out for permanent bond before FY twenty-six, so this is coming out of our operating budget. This slide shows our salary increases and decreases.
Yeah, so just, just to give you some information about these positions right here. So additions means, actually, in this case, that these are positions that were added after the budget last year was approved. But these positions we actually have right now. So for example, we have a school adjustment counselor that is split between the high school and Craneville Elementary School. So it's a point five at the high school, it's a point five at the elementary school. An example, just, just to give you an example of how we determined that we would include this, this position, this FTE in the budget, do you want to, you just click, do you want to click on that? Mike did some, our Assistant Superintendent Hennall did some groundwork around numbers, which I'm gonna let him to speak to this a little bit, because when I said that we do a lot of research, we gather a lot of data around why these are, positions are important and what the need looks like for us, this is a, a window into that process for us.
Yeah, we just, we wanted to take a look at caseloads and the number of individual sessions and group sessions that our school adjustment counselors have been running. And as you can see by the numbers, if you, if you take a close look, they're working at capacity. And the, the recommended ratio at the national level is one school adjustment counselor for every two hundred and fifty students. And we are right around there for, for most of our schools with the additions. And, and we do feel like we're much more poised to support our students' mental health needs with our current structure.
The, the second position on this slide is the Nescus Bridges teacher. So this is a program that we started at Nescus last year. This is specifically for those students who are two to three years below grade level. We track their progress very carefully and very closely. A standout piece of data for this group is that those students are averaging anywhere between ninety-two and a hundred percent attendance. So this group, the, these are students that typically might not come to school. They are coming to school, and not only are they coming to school, but they're also making progress. So this position last year was partially funded by the, the Taconic Foundation. Again, when I say that we continue to look at our budget, they have reached out to us again, and we are, and you know, I think they're proud of the work that Central Berkshire is doing, and we will be reporting back to them. It's possible also that they will partially fund this, this position for us this year as well. So we have a lot of data to share with them. I don't have it all right here, but the biggest standout for me was, was attendance. Our district-wide L teacher, these are students that are English as a second language. We've had an increase in those number of students. We have required number of hours that we have to provide. So that's it, that's in the budget this year. A special education teacher at Craneville, which is really based on IEP needs and what we call grid services. So those are students with identified disabilities and services that we provide for them, and services that they need to receive from a licensed special education teacher. Do you want me to talk about? I'll turn you up. Two decreases. So what we were able to do, I mentioned earlier that we've done some pretty intensive, or taken a hard look at scheduling at the high school. What, what, what Principal Rob and Assistant Superintendent Hennall were able to do is they were able to free up one of our, our ELA teachers, point five, so that students, instead of receiving ELA support from a Title I tutor, they're going to be receiving group-targeted ELA support from a licensed high school teacher. So we don't need the Title I tutor anymore. So that is a decrease. Another decrease is the instructional coach position at the high school. So with the, with the retirement of the assistant principal of the high school, that position is going to turn into a vice principal of teaching and learning when we fill that, and that will be in the spring.
The other piece of this is, we also did increase our substitute line. If you remember, the school committee voted to increase those rates earlier this year. But this is also something that's meeting the actual expenditures in that line. This getting us whole for like the FY twenty-four. So we still will be a little less, but I think it'll be much, it'll be easier for us as a district. And then the contractual increases for staff.
We also looked at reallocations, and basically that means looking at our resources internally and just taking a hard look at where do we need those resources. One of those that we looked at is special education. Again, this is at Wakona High School. This is some work that I give credit to Assistant Superintendent Hennall, Principal Rob, and our Student Services Director, Mr. Nathan Luke. And what they, what they, we, we had talked about is having at the high school a student support center. So that means that students who are struggling in the classroom for a variety of reasons, oftentimes it's disciplinary or behavioral, we want to provide them with the tools to be successful in the classroom. We want to, as much as possible, eliminate things like out-of-school suspension or even sometimes in-school suspension. How can we support you in this moment to be successful? We were able to consolidate resources so that one of those special education teachers will be the facilitator of the student support center. And so that's, that is one, and, and we will title that position the student support coordinator. We already have one science teacher from the high school who is point eight at the middle school, point two at the high school. Next year, that science position will be full-time at Nescus Middle School. We, and you've probably heard this loud and clear from our principals from the two smaller schools. They have a math interventionist that they share. They are very much wanting a reading interventionist as well. Very much also needed, looking at the data, particularly Kittredge, I think, right now. What our intention, what we're anticipating and hoping to do is based on enrollment and looking at the number of classroom teachers we need, is to pull, is to turn one of those classroom teacher positions into an ELA intervention, interventionist position that would be shared between the two schools. And last, I already spoke, I think I spoke about this a little bit. One of the ELA teachers at Wakon High School will become a point five interventionist at the high school to have targeted small group instruction.
This slide shows some, so we do use other funds to help up, offset some of our salaries. And the majority of those being, or the two areas would be through grants or revolving accounts. So what I did on this slide, I listed what we used last year, the FY twenty-five numbers, and this year's. You'll see that some that we used last year are, we are not using this year. For instance, the Student Opportunity Act grant and the S R three grants, those both had to be spent by FY twenty-five. So we are not seeing those grants going forward. Rural aid is another one. We did receive rural aid, and I believe financial at our next meeting will be really looking at, are we gonna do the same thing that we did last year? And anticipate funds coming in FY twenty-six from rural aid, if we want to allocate some of our salaries there. But looking at this, we, we did see a decrease in the use of these funds, but overall, we were able to allocate one point, just about one point eight million to our grants and revolving accounts.
I just want to add something that I, I probably should have added in the beginning, when I was mentioning cautious, you know, to be cautious around this budget, that this is not what our budget will, final budget will look like. One of the things that we do in collaboration with finance is we talk about allocating other revenue sources, such as rural aid, to offset the budget. So when you see this on this chart, last year, we did that. We have not done that yet. But that's always done in collaboration with the finance subcommittee.
The last area we really can offset with other funds is through Circuit Breaker. That is one of our grants. But the only difference with this one is it, it's actually one of our revolving accounts. But the only difference is this is not hitting salaries. This is actually hitting special ed tuition. So we do have six hundred thousand of funds that we are bringing in this year, so we know the exact amount we get in Circuit Breaker. So when we're using, using it for our budget next year, we know the, down to the penny. So we do have six hundred thousand to help offset those tuition costs for students. So if you take that number you saw a couple of slides ago, that thirty-seven million, subtract our offsets, we get to a number of thirty-four million, seven nine six, seven six two, which is where our current operating funds increases. So we do see an increase year-over-year of twelve point two seven percent, or just about three point eight million. This is the number that hits, that looks at our, the state aid that helps fund this. Any local revenue, so town assessments, RE and D, that's how you, this gets apportioned out to the, all those areas. So if we look at the next slide, our overall operating budget is that thirty-four million, seven nine six, seven six two. This is the slide that's really hard to look at, because we don't know a lot of this information at this moment in time, moment in time. For instance, the first two lines, chapter seventy and seventy-one, those numbers are, and just so the members of the finance subcommittee notice, those, that first number's a little different. For the finance subcommittee, I use the number we adopted in FY twenty-five. What I should have used is the actual revenue we're bringing in this year in FY twenty-six. So we do see a little increase of twenty-three thousand there. But we are hopeful we're gonna see more than that twenty-three thousand, or more than that point two percent. We don't have that number yet. Same thing with chapter seventy-one. We're kind of guessing where that one is, at a one percent. We could see more. We'll get an idea, we'll have a better idea when that state aid comes out, January twenty-second. A lot of these have stayed the same, but I'll go through them, because I know we have a lot of new members. Contingency revenue, that is, we have that set at two hundred and fifty thousand. That is in case we get more state aid than we're actually anticipating. We also have contingency expenses in our operating budget of two hundred and fifty thousand. We don't use those expenses. We don't anticipate this revenue, so they cancel each other out. So it does not affect the overall increase. Or what's being pushed to the town assessments. Charter school reimbursement, that's also set by the state. If you remember back, we, I did increase our assessment for charter school. We also get a reimbursement. The reimbursement is much lower. At this moment in time, I think it's going to be closer to about twenty-five thousand. Transportation revolving, that is, those are funds that, in July, the school committee voted to deposit into our transportation, transportation revolving fund from last year's budget. So we, it's about a hundred thousand, or it is a hundred thousand less than last year. Right now, it's sitting at five hundred thousand. So that number can be used to offset next year's budget. Interest income, we're keeping that at thirty-five thousand, and Medicaid, one, a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The only thing with Medicaid, we are looking this year to start, what am I looking for? Submit for reimbursements for our special ed costs through Medicaid. So I may be able to increase that a little bit, but in the next couple of weeks, I'll be meeting with the director, or Director Lou, Special Ed Director, to see how much she thinks we can increase that line item. Miscellaneous income is what it is. It's miscellaneous. In most years, you expect not to use that. One area I think we do use it normally, or in most years, is if we have, we share transportation with, say, Huzek. At the end of the year, we get a check from Huzek, because we paid the bill all year. It just goes into this miscellaneous account. E and D, this number, I know, as we met at finance last week, it was not certified. It was certified today, so it'll be on next agenda. The Department of Labor Standards needs to certify what you have access each year. So that number is correct, and it's about eleven thousand year-over-year. With all those numbers, which are a lot are unknowns, the rest go to town assessments, that is not where we're gonna end the, end this budget cycle. So I almost don't want to say the number out loud, but it's where we're starting. Before, because we're gonna be moving into like students and staff, are there any questions on the budget before we go further? If you want to hold off till the end too, that's.
What was chapter seventy growth from twenty-four to twenty-five?
Three, I think it was three percent.
Three percent?
Three percent, yeah.
Okay. So you definitely undervalued that, for sure.
Yes, but that's, the reason I use number, this number is that's what's in our budget guidelines that the school committee approves.
Okay.
I do, I, in my background, I am using that three percent number to kind of have an idea.
So everyone understands this doesn't have some additional revenues that we intend to be using as offsets, possibly, right? Because this is not a number we can.
So, so, so last year, so I think what, what Dr. Eberwine is referring to is that every year, correct me if I'm wrong, every year, Central Berkshire receives rural aid. And we are, I believe we're two hundred and four, because we're geographically two hundred and fourteen square miles. We receive, we're one of the fortunate districts in that we receive one of the largest amounts in rural aid. And last year, what we, what the finance subcommittee agreed to do was offset the budget in anticipation of getting rural aid at seven hundred and twenty thousand. And then also, at the same time, we still had some rural aid from that year, prepaid some expenses with rural aid to offset the budget. So these are definitely decisions that finance makes, finance subcommittee makes in collaboration with, with us.
Here, Sharon.
I just had a question about the instructional coach at Wakona, that you're taking that position and sort of transitioning it over to the vice principal of teaching and learning. I guess my first question is, is that like a one-to-one? Um, I guess my first question is, is that like a one to one? I would, I would expect that the VP would.
So the instructional coach, that's actually retirement this year.
Okay.
Um, and the instructional coach at the high school works in, with coaching teachers and runs our, we call them PLCs, they're professional learning communities. So that responsibility will fall to the Vice Principal of Teaching and Learning. And any kind of, um, concern that, you know, the, the administrative team might have there about less support around discipline, behavior management, um, social emotional support, we're hoping would be offset by the student, um, the student support center and that the student support coordinator.
Um, and the one thing I want to add, so currently we have a principal, assistant principal, dean, and an instructional coach. So we are shifting away from the instructional coach and the assistant principal will be teaching and learning.
Gotcha.
So there is a reduction in that.
Yeah, okay, that makes more sense. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, Dave?
Yeah, so we're shifting the band from operating to capital essentially. So we're taking 465,000 out of.
Operating and going into capital.
Which makes us 12 and a quarter percent. A lot higher. The income.
If you factor in the capital, yes, we, we've never had before, right?
We're just shifting it, right?
But that's, but we've been very straightforward with the towns through the years that that's what would happen um, as we got to the end of the project. But yes, I understand what you're saying. It's just shifting from one fund to another.
Right, which makes it actually increase that much more.
Right.
Anybody else? All right, keep going.
So this will really come into play when we go into the tentative budget. We don't show the individual town assessments at this point because we don't have those state aid numbers, which then also provide the local, um, required contributions for each town. So even if you try to throw those numbers, they would be completely off. But this is the, the five-year averages for each of the towns. So these are the percentages on how anything over that local, um, the minimum requirement for each town is calculated. Um, you can see a couple of things to note on this screen, just some of the changes through the last couple of years. For instance, Covington, the last two years, they gained five students. Um, for Hensdale, they went up by quite a few students from 183 in 2023 to 198 in 2024. So overall, if you look at those bottom two lines for October 1, 2023 and October 1, 2024, the overall district numbers, we went from, those are students in our seven towns. We went from 1349 to 1353. So we did go up in students in our seven towns, but we went down by the number of students that are choice in any other, the other column. So overall, we went from 1589 to 1562. We are still up from the 2020 number. Um, so we are, I think we're doing better than people were saying a few years ago, what our enrollment would look like. We're kind of holding steady rather than decreasing.
Or what's the other column?
The other column, that would have been preschool. So we are counting those students in the, um, the district numbers.
That's really the difference maker on this chart between 23 and 24, right? You went from 32 to zero. Am I reading that right?
Yes, for those preschool, preschool tuition. And the reason it's zero in 2020, remember that was our COVID year that we did not have students pay, um, for preschool. So we did not count them in that tuition. So they were over in the other columns for that year.
I understand it right, just, I want to say it out loud. Our resident number went up and actually our choice went up by one too.
Choice went up by, by one, yes.
Okay, so I'm just saying last two years. Um, so it's really the other column that's, it's driving the total down.
Yep.
Yeah.
This is just a chart that shows that last slide. Um, the, the top green line is the total students in the district. The red line being the district's students and the blue line at the bottom being the school choice. Um, see, that we've been kind of holding steady since 2017.
So this, um, is just really a breakdown of our percent, where our students live in our district, where they are. Um, it, if you look at the pie on the left and adds up to 100%, um, I think one change or shift for us is that Craneville is now our biggest school at 458 students. Um, and you can just kind of from there sort of see the breakdown of, of percentage wise, um, where, where are, where we are in terms of, um, in terms of size.
So these two slides show, um, our certified staff in the building. So, um, you see on the left-hand side, those are our elementary schools. On the right-hand side is the, our middle school and our high school. It just breaks down so you can kind of see where the teachers are, um, i- i- and what their area is. So on the right, left-hand side, you can see for elementary classroom, the second line, we have four elementary classroom teachers at Beckett, 19 at Craneville, six at Kittredge. So this is something, and on the right-hand side, if you wanted to look at, um, physical education, we have one at Nescus and we have three at Wakona. So if this is something, if you, in the next couple of weeks, when you're looking through, feel free to ask questions. Um, but this is what feeds into this slide, which then compares where our students are in the district and where the teacher, where our certified staff is in the district. Um, we try our best to make sure that they kind of line up, but there are going to be areas where they don't. For instance, at the high school, um, the big piece of the pie on the left-hand side, there's so many specialized classes at the high school. So you will see a higher FTE count at the high school level rather than the elementary level. But I think as best as we can, we do have our FTEs portioned out in the areas where they should be. This is a new slide, the finance subcommittee did not see it. Um, actually, um, Dr. Eberwine reached out with this question. I thought it was a really good question, so I wanted to add it to the presentation. Um, this is the five-year look snapshot of where our FTEs are across the board. Um, so you can see through 2022 through 2020, where we are currently sitting with, um, 2026. So this year we are sitting with 279 FTEs. That's with teachers, parent professionals, admin assistants, custodians, food service. And then I broke down our individual contracts. This, on the left-hand side is all the different contracts. Um, administrative, or individual administrators, the administrators in the district, um, individual classified, that would be, um, our title and tutors or our van drivers. I just wanted to separate those, separate those ones out. But, um, you can see that we had a FTE high in 2024 with 281.4. But, um, the one thing I do want to note is that this is not a, um, this is a representation of what's in the budget for FTEs. If you added any, so for instance, in FY25 or 2025, any of those new additions that were approved after the budget, they're not included on the sheet because I only went by what was approved by the budgets. Um, I can always create another one for that, but at this moment in time, I just did what was in the current budget for each fiscal year. The last piece of the puzzle is our capital budget. Um, one of our projects did come off this year, the Beckett-Washington renovation project came off the books. Um, however, we did add funds to our Wakona building project, which will, um, that goes through FY47. That is the last at most 20% that was going to be added to this project because we went out for bond, um, at the very beginning of the project for 80% of the project. We had to go out for the remaining ones, we knew the actual numbers. So that has been included at this point. So that is our budget. Um, the one that I do want to note, so this will be on the website tonight. Um, but there, another piece that will be going on the website tomorrow is that we do, um, each year, and I can show you last year's. It's a budget document, it's a budget website for us, um, where we can put any historical data, we can put the new data. Um, if you go, let me go back to the very beginning so you know. If you go to our main page for Central Berkshire and you scroll down to this little area right here, you'll see one that says budget. Click on that. This very top one, this is last year's, but you'll see the CBRSD maintenance and operating budget profile. This has a whole bunch of information. I will be sending this link out to you as well. Um, has like estimates for school choice, has school census information, doing attending reports, um, budget guidelines that will improve, any budget information from the, the state. So there's a lot of information here, but I will send this link out. I have not finished the new profile for FY26, but that's my goal for tomorrow to get that done and send out to everybody.
Then the next two steps for us is, um, the public hearing on the 23rd and that, at that time, we'll have Tracy Novick. We did invite other superintendents and other school committee members. Um, at that time, hopefully we will get more information about, um, state numbers. We will, and then the, the next step after that is we will be meeting again on January 28th with the finance subcommittee. And at that point, we'll also have insurance rate and rates, um, updated as well.
And I do want to just add, uh, because I know there are a lot of new members. If you're looking through this and you have questions, don't hesitate to reach out. Um, email me, call, I'm more than happy to talk, talk you through things or explain things in different ways. So please reach out.
Any more questions?
Um, I'm sorry, I missed the finance subcommittee and Greg, thanks for doing that, Graff. That is, that's fantastic.
Oh, no problem.
Three hours, we're talking out loud, holy moly. It's really good. Um, all right, my question really is more around process for Leslie. And that is, um, appreciate the worksheet that you showed today. I couldn't read it all. Um, and you asked people to sort of identify the priorities, which I'm assuming showed up on some of the, the positions that you had laid out.
Yes.
Okay.
There was where, um, most of those, all those positions that you saw that were under additions were on the priority list.
Okay. My question for you around process is, it seems to me, this is kind of the obvious comment, but we'd be in a serious world of hurt without rural aid. Um, so the question is, are you talking to your staff also about the other direction? Which is what can you live without?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, the interesting thing is we, we are having those conversations. We actually start having those conversations in the summer when we meet in our, we call it our ILT, which is our instructional leadership team, and we look at data and we look at numbers. Um, some positions, I think, is, we actually had a conversation about that today. There's a, there's a little, our third and fourth graders right now, I think because of COVID, they're, they're those, they had that, um, they're struggling way more than our, um, first and kindergarten, first and second graders because our kindergartners have, have had preschool, our first and second graders. We made some curriculum changes, but they've been in school full time. So we've got these, a couple of little, I don't want to call them bubble classes, but we have some classes that we're seeing that really need more attention right now in terms of specifically literacy support. But we don't anticipate, or we're, we're not anticipating that they'll need the same level of support. We want to make sure they have it now so that that doesn't translate into struggling with reading at the middle school. So there are some positions that we wouldn't, we would anticipate possibly not, not needing. The other thing that I have looked at and, and I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm, you know, can I, uh, ask myself this question? Um, how, how, how this could be given where we are? But I also look carefully at the, and we discussed this, the per pupil expenditure across the, across the county. And what's interesting is we're at the very bottom. And, and, you know, when I look at needs and I look at how we structure our administrative teams and try to keep it lean, prioritize direct services to students. Um, I look at Central Berkshire as, no, this is a, this is a 2022 number because I can't get numbers that are over 2022.
So, um, so that number was just released, um, recently, the 2022 number, so.
So we're at, our, our per pupil expenditure right now, according to the most recent release, was 17,839. The highest right now is, in Berkshire County is 26,104 per pupil and the state average is 20,134. So we're actually below the state average, um, as well. So I, I, I'm not sure how far off we are in terms of, you know, providing resources to students, but, um, we're, we're, you know, really digging in and trying to be as efficient as possible and making sure our students, um, get the support that they need.
Can I ask a question? What, what goes into that number? Is that total budgets, salaries?
Per pupil expenditure?
Yeah.
I think it's, is it, what is it?
It's our, our true expenditures for FY22.
Total budget.
Not total, there's some, some things that are not out, so capital would not be included, but instructional costs.
So it's buildings and grounds, salaries, everything?
Yeah.
Basically operating.
We're basically operating.
Operating.
Any other questions? Do you know? That is? That's him. Thank you very much. Do you not, do, uh, you have another item there? The, uh.
MSBA.
MSBA.
Yeah.
I'm not done. So. I knew that. So I just wanted to update you. I, I maybe, you know, in, in the, during my time as, as administrator, an administrator, um, 14 years in Central Berkshire, I did not realize, um, this is new to me, that MSBA, um, every year conducts what they call a survey and they reach out to school districts. And I think the purpose is for the state to really get an idea of what, what is, what is the state of the state around school buildings in Massachusetts? Um, and it's probably also partially to make sure that, you know, or to ensure that MSBA is a valued resource in the state of Massachusetts to support, um, renovating buildings, um, providing new building structures and that kind of thing. I mean, at the bottom line is we want to have safe, healthy settings for students that meet their needs. Um, we were selected this year. There is a lot of information and data that they are asking for. A lot of infrastructure building data, um, that they are, that they are requesting. Um, I will tell you that a good part of this falls under, um, our brand new Director of, um, Grounds and Maintenance, Glenn. Um, Glenn is working hard to make sure he has things like square footage of rooms and, um, roofing data. And, um, they even ask though, things like how many lunch periods do you have in a class? And, um, staffing, and there's a whole host of questions. So we have a data Excel sheet where we're gathering all that information. And then next week on January 14th, that, what we do is we take that information, we turn it over to them. Um, we're going, I'm going to look at it more carefully a couple of days before that. We, we meet with them in a virtual meeting. Um, it's principals, the, uh, principals, Glenn, um, the assistant superintendent, finance director, myself, um, and answer any questions they have, report it. We need to, you know, make sure we're familiar with this information. Um, and then that will be followed by a site visit, which we don't know when that is. Ultimately, they will generate a report that is, um, available publicly. But I will share, as, as this process continues, this is new to us. I'll share all the information that comes to me. I'll share that report with you as soon as I receive it.
What are the potential outcomes from that?
I think the potential outcomes are, I think it's, I'm not really sure if it's more for their purposes. I think probably both. It's for their purposes to say, you know, what is the state of the state in terms of Massachusetts buildings? But also it's probably great information for us and we have the, um, Greg calls it the peep. Um, but this information will be a great, will feed into that. It'll be great for us to see, you know, that report and to build, bring that to finance and include that in, in our strategic plan over time as well.
Yeah, one, one of the things that we've been trying to do is building these grounds, coming up with, you know, what are our needs, what's, what's the next big project coming up?
Right.
Having this audit from MSBA is going to like be a real nice, uh, dovetail right into that really well. Especially around energy needs too as well, so.
Do they, like, give us a rating or anything like that?
I don't know honestly if the report includes a rating. I, you know, if they, I'll let you know, I can find that out. Um, but I'm not really sure at this point.
They, they, if you don't mind me jumping in, they've done this survey three times already, 2016 and 16. So this is, they're overdue. Um, so this 2025 set of surveys is really to update the entire state database. And they do have a few categories in which they rate schools. It's just a very simple number system, but you're, you can go to the MSBA site and pull up the 2016 data. I'm assuming that this is going to look something like that. Um, but it is, it's a good process because it also sets up, you know, future, and you know, applications, whether it's accelerator repair or.
Right.
You ever decided to build another school here, right? You're in your role.
Any other questions?
And I don't have anything else other than just a shout out for the high school mentor program because I've regu, I don't know why this year I seem to see a lot of our high school students either at the outlets or at Iolata. And they're always, you know, saying to me, oh, you know, the freshman dance was amazing and great. And did you, did you talk to Mr. Rob about it? And I said, no. But, um, but we're seeing some, um, we're seeing some enthusiasm, some energy and participation that we haven't seen in the past. And I think it, it really speaks to the mentor program and the kids are having a lot of fun and making some great connections. So, um, really pleased with how that's going.
The, uh, National Youth Leadership thing that.
Oh, I was going to put it in my, go to the committee at the end, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, um, moving on. So, reporter to the chair, um, a couple of things. MAC training date, charting the courses, March 22nd in Berkshire Hills, the new folks. They're, they, MAC does this, this is required training for new members on school committees. By law, you have to get this training. It's, call it a full day, but it's usually like four, five hours, but, um, it's on a weekend, Saturday, the 22nd. Uh, they're usually, they spread them around the state. So this one's local, so you're going to want to go to that one, sign up and go to that one. I think, John, you might want to look into this. And there's some other things, I'll, uh, I'll get in touch with you. And there's some other things I'll, I'll get in touch with you about some of the requirements that you need to, coming on the school committee. The other thing is, we, Dave went to the conference and Charlotte gave us a little bit update last time, but I think Dave wanted to update us and we didn't have time last time. So I don't know, if you want to give us a
Sure.
update from the conference?
The general sessions, Jim Shriver with his dignity project, they give us these little handouts. Basically, he talked a lot about, you know, using words of dignity, of dignity and avoiding words of contempt, othering people would be, you know, an example of some language of contempt. There are some different strategies that they handed out such as, you know, basically listening to people, asking questions, valuing their input, knowing that they, they have value even if you disagree with them, respectfully disagreeing. That was, that was pretty good. There was one on living in poverty, Linda Riddle, who's a social epidemiologist. She invented a game called getting by that uses real life situations to illustrate the challenges that people living in poverty have to, the decisions that they have to make. Do they fix the car? Do they buy food? Talked a lot about how this, this kind of mental workload consumes a vast amount of energy and really, really decreases the functionality or, or the amount that people living in poverty can really function and not operate at their potential there. Poverty is also, it's, it's often thought of as just within, above or below federal guidelines. But I think we also need to think about, about that in relation to the community. Somebody, let's say somebody living in Lenox, might not be under the, the poverty guidelines, but in relation to their peers, they could feel that way. So that's something to think about as we talk about poverty, that it's not just a number. It's also, it's also a relationship to others. There was a general session. That was a moderated debate. It was post-election, the future of education. It was kind of billed as sort of working together. It seemed pretty obvious, most of the people in the room were disappointed with the outcome of the election. I seemed to me that there is, most of the panel had a similar political viewpoint. There wasn't a lot of diversity and thought there as we talk about reaching both sides of, of the political divide. Some of the things that they talked about concerns with this President-elect Trump's administration, concerns with Title IX, DEI issues, 504 and civil rights issues, things that we might be dealing with over the next four years. There was a Division Six meeting, MASC Division Six. Nobody had stepped up for leadership positions on that. So we didn't have anybody, Carrie Green, so that she would kind of take it up again if anybody else wanted to, but there was, there was kind of low turnout to, to that. Charlotte and I made up a good portion of that meeting.
It's, it's not atypical. It's typical, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, that was
In my experience.
Last year was my first year and it was, it was a similar thing, so. I think that mirrors what we're seeing in our towns and thank John for being here, filling an open seat. It's been open for about a year now.
Yeah, a little less, but yeah.
Yeah, so there was, Charlotte and I went to session on the art of listening. Couple of interesting things about that was public engagement, right? And one of the things they talked about was having a school committee table at functions. So people actually see us and we could talk about what we do. Make it sound interesting. And there was some discussion on different ways of laying out the room for facilitating discussions. I think that's similar to what we did for Portrait of a Graduate work, that, that had a really good feeling to it. In my, my opinion there? Do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, along those lines, they, I think we had a conversation afterwards where, you know, there is some helpful stuff there, especially in moving forward with, you know, the regional agreement. That, you know, setting a room up and potentially even just having, you know, one member of the school committee at one table and those tables sort of spread out in a, in a larger room to facilitate discussion, but also prevent sort of this, like the open meetings kind of create this odd and very clunky form of discussion that doesn't really turn into conversation. And really like, that is what communicating really requires is to be able to have a give and a take and, and a back and forth. Yeah, I thought they were, I thought they were generally good, and I, I think that it is also important to communicate to the people who come and speak that, you know, we hear them, we don't necessarily always agree with them. But I think helping them to make, to make them feel more heard is important on our end.
Delegate resolutions, all of them passed, and there are some issues on there, there's one about allowing, allowing school committees to go over the two and a half, Prop two and a half. The way that was explained was that they're not trying to promote runaway budgets essentially. But, but sort of throw it back at the legislators to say, you know, either fund the stuff. You know, they're not going to want to vote to let us go over two and a half or, you know, or let the towns go over for our budget. So it was sort of like a little bit of leverage there, is the way they thought of it. But everything passed. And that process is, so the, the delegates approve the resolutions and then one of the members, MASC, goes to the state house and promotes those there through the legislature. Is that
Yeah.
kind of correct there?
Yeah.
And lastly, there was also a table there, DEP was there, talking about water testing for lead. And they test down to the parts per billion. It's free testing and they will give you up to $3,000 for replacing the, the old bubbler type water fil, water fountains with new ones that have filters in them and also bottle fill stations. And I can send you a link on that. And they also have units in line or some mechanism for the cafeteria so that, so that there, the cooking water and stuff can also be filtered there. One of the things that they said, I think, I think the number is correct, that brass fittings and a lot of these units have brass fittings, contains about 8% lead as a metal, so. So there's, I can, well, share that information with you on, on the water testing. And looking forward to next year.
If you have to go.
All right, thanks. Any questions for Charlie or Dave? Seeing none, okay. So next up is, in our, in our bylaws, the chair usually is a ex officio member, which means a non-voting member, but can speak and debate at meetings unless, and if the chair want, is, in order for the chair to vote or, or chair of a committee, the school committee has to, has to vote to approve that and appoint that. So I, when I got the subcommittee assignments, nobody, nobody stepped up to be the chair of the personnel subcommittee. Plus I think it's a, it's a pretty important committee right now. It's not unusual for the chair of the school committee to be a chair of the personnel committee. It hasn't been in my tenure, but we lost Dick LeCattell. So I'm offering to, to be that chair, and I think it's a pretty important piece because of what we got going on right now. So it's up to the committee to agree to that. And if I could, want to read a motion?
Sure. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee appoint member Peters as the chairperson of the personnel subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussions, questions? Yeah, Liz.
This means you can vote.
This means I can vote and also I'll be the chair of that. Yeah. So, yeah, normally, like I said, an ex officio member, I can go to the meetings and I can debate and discuss and everything else, but I, I'm not a voting member unless I get elected to that. I have been in the past elected to be a voting member of policy subcommittee. And I'm not this, I'm not this year, just last year I was, because we started a whole big policy shift. But anyways, so, so far I haven't been any other voting members on any other committees. Anybody else? Question?
Are there any possible downsides to you being the chair of that subcommittee that I'm totally missing? Because I don't see any issue with it at all, so.
I mean, I talked to Dick LeCattell and I talked to MASC about it, and it's not unusual. Matter of fact, it's more the case than not the case, especially in some, some districts. So I, I don't know if there's any downsides. Yeah, I mean, at this point, because we have negotiations coming up, we have a superintendent vacancy coming up. I think there's, you know, two pretty big issues that if I'm not on the committee, I will be there anyway. So, yeah. So, yeah, anyways. And, and yeah, Dave?
Yeah, I, I don't have any, any issues with you being chair, chair of the committee or, or voting member. I, I do think the makeup of the committee, they could probably use a few members.
Yeah.
There's three members on that, and there's a lot of work to do.
Yeah, I did talk to MASC and Mr. LeCattell about that, and they actually both recommended that it be a small committee. But because you don't really do, you don't do the work, you create programs to do the work. So they weren't, they thought that was okay and normal, actually. And I think one of the examples is our superintendent ad hoc committee. It's like a subject, a subset of the personnel committee. And that's kind of what they said as well, is that, that sort of, the work is done by other people, not just personnel. But, I mean, I'm open to other people being on, so it's, I'm not opposed to that, but I'm just, right now, as, as it started. One of the new members did sign up, but I don't think it's a good place for a new member to be. So I, I, you know, that was like their third or fourth preference, and I felt like, you know what? Given what we've got going on, I think I, I kept it with people who are experienced, so. Any, any other questions, your concerns? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so that goes on to the next piece, which is the superintendent vacancy process. And I've been working with MASC and Mr. LeCattell just picking his brain a lot about this because this is new to me and he's been through several superintendent searches. And so what I, what I, and, and talking to MASC, MASC has a terrific program that is for free. They also have search programs that cost $11,500. They'll do the entire search, but what they have is a, what they call technical assistance, and it doesn't cost any money. And they'll build the brochures, they help form the committee, they, they do a ton of stuff, making sure you're staying, you know, complying with OML and, you know, just a whole bunch of things that they do, and it's for free. And when I mentioned it to Dick, he says they've used it whenever they did it, they use it, and he says it's fantastic. So I'm really excited about having them help the, the, set the committee. And, and what I'm doing is what they're saying to do, and the personnel subcommittee would essentially create the process for the search and, and then bring that to the, and, and build, say, an interview team and a, and a search team. And then bring that to the full committee for approval. So that's essentially what I see happening at the personnel subcommittee level is getting with MASC and getting that process going right away. Because we, we, we do have a timing issue. I mean, not, it's not that big of a deal. I mean, obviously we've got to get somebody on the, we've got to get somebody replaced before the end of the year. But we have, the next meeting is the, the public hearing. So really the next meeting where we can really approve what we're doing is the first meeting in February, I think. So anyways, that's what I propose to do, and I'll get that started right away. I don't know if there's any questions or concerns or ideas or.
This question, I mean, my question would be, can we get things in motion?
Yes.
Such as the community profile, the the posting, you know, get this thing moving.
Beforehand, I think, I don't think we need a committee approval to get the posting out. And, and I think MASC puts the brochure together, they, they sent me a bunch of examples of brochures, just excellent. So I think right away, we can meet and get them engaged and get them going on that. We don't have to wait till February 13th to do that. We can get that going right away. So I, I think what will happen in February 13th is approval of the process that we lay out in the personnel committee. So we, the personnel committee, I expect to meet right away and then start building that process with MASC.
Thanks, Rich.
Yeah, yeah, I think, and I think that'll work good. Yeah, go ahead.
Couple of things on that. First, I'll start with, so I went to Hinsdale Select Board Meeting last night just to report back to them on, on what we've been doing and our reorganization, new members and the stuff that we have coming up. Hinsdale did make a motion. I don't know exactly the right way to say it, but they, they essentially moved that their position is that we conduct a full and thorough superintendent search, that's what they would like to see us do. I told them I'd relay that. Myself personally, you know, I, I understand that we, we have some, some good and qualified internal candidates. But I don't think we would know that they're the best candidates until we actually conduct a full and thorough search. And so I would advocate for that to, to really, really cast it out there and find the best candidate.
Okay. Yeah, Liz.
Was there any chance that we weren't going to do that? I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's a whole list of ways to go about this. And like, you could, you could appoint an interim while you do a full search. You can do a full search if you have strong internal candidates. You, the committee could decide not to have a search at all. You know, I mean, you could appoint somebody right away. So I think in the, in the, what's going on right now with Pittsfield and vetting folks, I think it makes sense to do a pretty thorough search.
I also think that is kind of a throwback to the last time we had to select a superintendent. There were some folks in Dalton too that thought we should have done a more thorough search and before picking Leslie. But we were advised by the, what is it, the MASC, that there wasn't a huge candidate population. It was in the middle of the pandemic and they said you had a very thorough, we had a very qualified candidate. So be happy. So I think people just want to see that we're not just favoring certain candidates.
Ultimately, it is up to this committee to decide which place to go. And then what we, the personnel committee will come up with a process, maybe a couple of options for the process. And then the committee will, will vote on the process that we take, so. Yeah.
My only other question would be, it's, it's a month, you know, and obviously, first of all, congratulations, Leslie. No one said that to you online, so congratulations on the decision, decision to retire and everything. We, we appreciate that, and we didn't acknowledge that yet, and I just want to make sure we did that, so thank you. But the committee will want to know what we're up to. And waiting until February 13th, can we, you as the chair, put something out saying that maybe in conjunction that you've already sent a letter out to the community, right? Leslie, you've notified everyone before the holidays that just, that the committee is working on a process and
Yeah.
I just think it would be helpful for folks to know what's going down.
Totally agree. I, I mean, without a chair for the committee and a committee put together, we really were kind of, hands were tied till, till now. Like, we didn't really have anybody to go forward with, right? Or, so anyways, now we can. And yeah, I agree, we, we've got to get working on it right away.
I can, I can always include it in my family messages. I don't know if that's appropriate, but I'm more than happy. I don't know if that's appropriate, but I'm more than happy to include that in my family message. And I'm sure it's more positive than a data breach, but sorry.
It's a good idea because one of the things is you do want community input, you know, so I think getting it out there, people know what's going on.
So I'm happy to include that as if, as soon as I get just a little more information from Rich, I'll make sure I send that out.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? All right, thank you. Let's see, next up, we just have an appointment of physician for the school district. Apparently, Dolan Bach retired and we, we kind of knew that, but I don't know. We were told he was still going to be there, but that was a miscommunication, so we have to change our appointment, so. You would, sir?
So be it resolved that Dr. Adam Geiswitz? I don't know, yes. And be appointed for physician of the Central Berkshire Regional School District from January 9th, 2025 to November 30th, 2025.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion or questions?
What practice is he from?
Pediatric pediatrician, I believe.
Yeah, he was recommended to us through Berkshire Health Systems, so.
He's the new guy at Dr. Dempsey's?
No, at Dolan Bach's office.
Oh, okay. He was so kicking to us with the recommendation, they they kind of help us, the the health systems helps us identify someone. And it sounds to me like he's willing to do some, you know, professional development and be fairly active. And I, it sounded like, and the other thing is, we always ask Kelly Jean, our head nurse, to actually help us with this process. So I have a lot of faith in her and her recommendations as well.
Any other, Charlie?
I, I mean, I don't, I, that makes sense to me, that process. I think I just, like, don't love appointing people that I've never met. And in the future, would it be possible to invite this person to come and just introduce themselves? And maybe also teach us how to pronounce his last name, because I don't know either.
He, he did say, you know, he said he would be more than happy to help. Just historically, this is not a stipend position, this is totally voluntary. We typically have a pretty hard time finding someone who's willing to do this. But I absolutely, that's an excellent point. I know he'll come and and we could even put off that until the early February meeting, although that might put us in a position of not having any.
I'm not so concerned about that, I just.
It's a good.
Would love to meet him.
I'm trying to say his name. Any other questions coming? Okay, wait, motion second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? Motion carries, okay, moving on, curriculum, first up.
Good evening, everybody. Curriculum subcommittee met on December 16th on Zoom. We had two items for discussion. One was fall benchmarking with the presentation from Assistant Superintendent Penault. Learned that benchmarking occurs four times a year, fall, winter, spring, and then MCAS. The purpose of the fall benchmarking is to set a baseline of where students are right in September so that we know what services and what skill sets our student has, students have and where we may need to support them. Benchmarking's purpose is to identify the students with issue, student issues, which help the administration design interventions by school, by grade, and by specific student. And these interventions can be used at school and at home. Methods for universal screening for literacy K through six, we use Amplify and Dibbles. Dibbles is used across the country, so it helps norm the data, so to speak. For grades K through two, we test for phonemic awareness, letter decoding, letter recognition, those kind of things. From the fall, we see that 50% of kindergarteners cannot read, but that's to be expected. You don't expect our kindergarteners to come in here knowing how to how to read. 14% of our first graders cannot read at grade level. 27% of our second graders are reading below our benchmark, but it's better than the national and national data. All this shows to us is that our Hegarty, Hegarty Phonics curriculum is effective. Now, for the third to sixth graders, these were the kids that were probably most affected by the school shutdowns during the pandemic. We do test in these arenas for accuracy, fluency, and comprehension. About 13% of our third graders can't read. That's pretty good. 48%, however, of our fourth graders, 54% of our fifth graders, and 44% of our sixth graders are below benchmark. Grades four through six were the hardest hit by the pandemic, as I said. So double the work needs to be done with the interventionists to catch these students up to grade level. As Leslie had said in her report, students were hoping, or schools were hoping to start off the year with a better, with a better foot, with an extra interventionist, but the position and the elementary level was only filled at the beginning of December. Also, in grades K through six, we are starting to test for dyslexia more thoroughly via crafting minds, which is a new, which is new to the district. We will have more discussion on this platform, it's on the agenda for our next subcommittee meeting. Methods for universal screening in math, we use Ames Web. It's a nationally normed skills-based assessment for grades K through two. 61% of our kindergarteners have grade level skills, 52% of first graders and 50% of second graders all have grade level skills. About 20% of our first and second graders are in tier two and three. So the district has brought in ST Math as a support program for these students. Now, remember what I said about the upper elementary schools for ELA? It's almost the exact opposite when it comes to grade level for math. 64% of third graders, 66% of fourth graders, and 71% of fifth graders all have grade level skills, which is really, really good. And the district is very happy about that. Edulastics is also an assessment we use for third through 10th grade. That is basically a mock MCAS test platform that pulls from a bank of prior used MCAS questions to gauge how the district students may do on the actual MCAS test. In ELA, most grades are meeting or exceeding where they should be for the beginning of the school year. The seventh graders were the standout with 62% of them meeting or exceeding grade level standards. Math results were pretty flat, but there were no dips in scores, which is usually what happens after a summer break. So administration is pretty happy with this, especially in the middle school, where you usually see the biggest shrinkage in scores on a national level. Benchmarking reports are going to be sent out to all K through six families. Desi only requires these reports go out to K through two. Purpose of these reports is to show parents and guardians how their students are doing and give suggestions on how they can support their students at home. Winter benchmarks are scheduled for January and February. Administration, as mentioned in the budget, will be asking to increase interventionists for the smaller schools in the 2526 budget. And as they did, so what the administration is trying to do is be more, is get more resource, better bang for our buck and gain efficiencies in the FTEs that we already have. And then what we also discussed were, we got a report on interventions by school from Superintendent Blake Davis. If you think of proficiency ranges shown on MCAS reports, there are four colors. So blue and green represent students who are meeting or exceeding expectations. Yellow and red represent students who are not meeting or partially meeting expectation. District uses the interventionist focus on those students in the red and yellow categories by targeting each student's foundational skills needs. The goal is to help move the students into the green and blue categories by teaching them critical thinking skills. There are no updates on how the extra interventionist at Craneville is doing. As I mentioned before, that position was only filled at the beginning of the summer. Wind blocks continue to be a success at the middle school. These blocks are designed to target each student's needs in the specific areas in which they are struggling. The Bridges Program, as talked about earlier, for reading in the middle school, is showing that about six out of 10 students are making leaps and bounds in reaching grade level. These students were the chronic absentee, absentee on the chronic absenteeism list last year. But those same students now have, as Leslie mentioned, a 95% attendance record so far this school year. There seems to be a bond being created between the interventionist running the program and these students. So these kids feel that somebody actually cares and is paying attention and really wants to see them succeed. So that's making them want to come to school. Further updates will be given to the subcommittee when we discuss winter benchmarking. Our next meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, January 14th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Our topics for discussion will be updates on the middle school science curriculum pilot, on the high school ELA program pilot. And we will get an update on the, how the implementation for Witten Wisdom ELA curriculum plus the Eureka Squared Math curriculum is doing at the elementary schools. Also to be discussed, as I said, there is professional development that had been given to the interventionists and general staff on the dyslexia screening. We also scheduled our meeting for February 25th, 7:00 PM on Zoom, where we will talk about winter benchmarking results and what the district will use for competency, competency determination for graduation in lieu of MCAS being removed as the statewide standard. Fun, fun.
Yeah, it's gonna be a good meeting. Any questions for Ellen?
I have a question. The benchmark testing goes up through 10th grade?
Yes.
And we send, I know, we don't have to send results after second grade, but we do send results to parents up to sixth grade.
Yes, that was a decision we started doing last year, I believe.
Is there a reason not to do it all the way up?
So.
Again, let's. To send the benchmark results to the parents for all of the grades that take the benchmark exams.
So the, what we've been building off that, the goal is eventually to get six through eight. And the reasoning for that is because the reporting function of our data reporting help us actually create the family reports. And the testing that we do up through the high school, the standards-based edulastic reporting, we don't have that functionality. And so we're, we're slowly building that. And then, once we have six through eight set, we'll then move on to have, we actually have to build those reports out to.
So the plan is.
The plan is to eventually send it out to everybody. We started with K through two, we're now through K through six. And by the end of this year, we should have the reports created for K through eight.
Any other questions? You none hearing in? Okay, next up is finance, Mr. Farrell.
Evening, everybody. The finance committee met on January 2nd. We covered three main topics, the Wakona Regional High School concession stand, fiscal year 2026 rural aid, and the initial budget preview that we went over already. Regarding the concession stand update, Jeff Cantarella provided us with that update saying that most of the major construction had been done, most of the masonry and trim work and trusses, shingles were going up this week, I believe. He informed us that they did hit ledge when they were digging for the pipe grinding unit, but believe that they would be able to work through that before a hard freeze takes over, although it's been very cold this week. So I don't know where they stand today with that.
Frozen.
Their goal is to be completed before the spring, to be ready for track season this spring. They did run into a few fundraising setbacks with certain fixtures coming in more expensive than they initially thought. And they're looking for some ways to increase exposure for some fundraising. As a committee, we did talk about some potential ways to help raise awareness through either a ribbon cutting. Leslie mentioned doing a potential interview with with I Berkshire. And then they did have a plan to sell individual pavers to community members. We're all discussed and he is looking for more ideas. So feel free to reach out to Jeff if you have any good fundraising ideas. Regarding the fiscal year 26 rural aid update, we learned that we were awarded over 1.6 million in rural aid this year, which is a pretty decent increase from last year, I believe it was around 1.3. Can I correct? Of the 1.6, about a million of it was already allocated to the fiscal year 2025 budget, leaving about 570,000 leftover for us to use for this, this year. We, we looked at a few potential areas where we could use those funds. Most pressing was to fix HVAC issues at Craneville. The current, I just, I'm not, I don't know this language. The current pneumatic system is old and full of holes. It's leaking. Resulting, and what that essentially means is that it's resulting in the boiler units constantly being called so that they're constantly running, running heat. So you have some classrooms that are freezing cold, some classrooms that are 80 degrees or something. So some of those funds, we talked about using those funds to to fix that issue, replacing the pneumatic system with an electrical system, which also could save money for the district down the road. Because if the units are only called when they're needed instead of all the time, it would result in utility savings. We also talked about a potential use of the funds for the technology replacement cycle and also for adding gates to the Wakona Regional High School bathrooms. Currently, the bathrooms there are modeled after airports, so there's sort of an open entryway on both sides for everyone who's been there, which has proven difficult to monitor. Having gates would allow for more control of what facilities are being used and when. The proposal also had some leftover funds that could be used to offset items in the fiscal year 2026 budget. As a committee, we didn't make any recommendations at that meeting. We decided to wait until we had firmer numbers from the state around the budget in case we needed to use more funds to offset in order to bring expectations in line. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the 28th at 6:30 here at Nessus. And we're going to talk about the Wakona Regional High School HVAC and mold update along with updates to the fiscal year 2026 budget for any new numbers that come in.
Any questions for Paul? Liz?
Sorry.
Looking at.
The, the HVAC system that you said is looking to be replaced with, what school did you say that was at?
That's at Craneville.
Craneville, okay, thanks.
Controls.
The control.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Along those same HVAC lines, have you looked at all, or I should ask you probably, have you looked at all into the funding that's available for transitioning things like that to?
Yes, actually, Glenn Reinholt and our director of billing ground, we have looked through those. So we're still in the process.
Yeah.
If we decide to do something with the HVAC controls, this is an amount that we forbid, so it would be a larger conversation. So yes, we are looking at that.
Thanks.
Any others?
The 28.
He's 28. Okay, next up is policy.
So we have not met since our last meeting. We have our meeting coming up on the 15th at 6:30 here at Nessus.
Personnel, obviously, has not met, we've heard about that. Safety and wellness?
We've also not met, but we're looking at possibly meeting on January 27th.
Phone and building project. We had a meeting with all the parties involved with the construction of the park building, with the construction of Wakona yesterday at at Wakona. And we didn't get very far, although it was definitely informative with respect to what the potential root causes were with respect to the alarm system anyway. And what the wires that weren't landed might not have been that they weren't ready. It might be that they were incompatible with PLC system that the control system is interfacing with. So that might be why they weren't there and we don't know whether we lost functionality with that yet or not. So there's some more digging that has to happen there. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get that answer while we were there, even though all the companies were represented. But there was a very interesting supply chain or subcontractor chain, which we thought General Mechanical to JCI to a third party, well, there was two more parties involved that weren't ever on the, at the table. And we did get a hold of them by phone, but their issue was going, it was taking too long to get information on. So we rescheduled for the two weeks from today, from yesterday. I think it's the 22nd, we're gonna convene again via Zoom with the appropriate parties and have that information and hopefully get to the, get the function, get the system functioning properly, because it still isn't. We're still not in great control of it, so we've got to get the system functioning properly. But also still trying to do the, the casework to figure out just actually what happened and why we weren't notified by alarm system that we had a runaway problem in the auditorium. And, you know, all the companies that are there, they keep trying to say. And, you know, all the companies that are there, they keep trying to say, well, somebody changed the setting, you know, and somebody did this. And I, I just keep hammering home if there was an alarm. And according to the Commissioner's report, there was an alarm. If there was an alarm, people would have been notified. We'd have gone in and adjusted the air conditioner and we would have, wouldn't have had mold. Without an alarm system, that's why we have mold. Now, there was lots of other things that went on that created the mold. But if we had an alarm system, we would have been able to prevent the mold from happening. And I'm going to hang on that till I'm, till I'm in the grave if I have to. But anyways, we still have work to do and hopefully on the 22nd, we get some more answers. I don't know if there's any questions on that, but still working on it. Yeah.
Is it mold or mold?
It was mold. Yeah. Yep.
You know, what kind of mold?
Yeah.
Okay. And it's been
Yeah, it was remediated right away back in August and September, beginning of September. That's why we couldn't open the auditorium right away. It was remediated right away. And that's really the big expense. And unfortunately, the insurance company, by insurance, there's a rider in there for mold. They pay out 25,000 per mold event. That's it. So we're out a lot more money than 25,000. So we're, that's one of the reasons why we're trying to get, you know, root cause as to what happened. And who's, you know, responsible parties, if there are any besides us. So any other question? Okay, so regional ad hoc.
Regional ad hoc, I'm looking to put a meeting together for January 16th, 6:00 PM. Like to do it in person. Not everybody will make it in person, so it'll be hybrid. Hybrid meeting. We'll go over timelines. Come up with game plan and see if we can get this done this year. Cool.
All right, Superintendent Ad hoc, I don't see Barbara, so.
On vacation right now.
Yeah, I know she's gone totally in a month. Okay, so that's all we have. So any old business? I think we have some new business. Want to go, you want to go first?
Yeah, so this was just more for, for the good of the committee. One thing I did want to mention, I have a shout out for some of our fifth grade students at Kittredge. They were nominated and selected for the National Youth Leadership Forum. And since I've been here, I don't know that that's happened. So we're very proud of them. And I think Mr. Stewart knows one of them.
I know, I know several of them.
There was more than one. On, on a much more sober note, we, it's, it's a, we had a loss to our community. We had a custodian at Wakona High School that was a former Wakona student. He, he was a super hard worker. He gave us 100%. His other members, he had siblings who went through Wakona High School. He recently passed and his family is, is pretty heartbroken right now. And so I just wanted to, you know, just say we, we have, we offer condolences to the family. We've been working with the family. But just for everybody to know, and I know that the staff at Wakona was, including Principal Rob, was, was very supportive. So, yeah.
Okay, any question? Member Morance, I think you have.
Can I say, I just, I want to say his name, Burnell Smith.
You have something to share?
Yes. There this Mass, Mass Save, the organization that we may all use our residences for, Mass Save has put together a program called the Municipal Energy Manager Grant Program. This is a program where they, utilities specifically Eversource and National Grid will fund 16 full-time positions throughout the state of Massachusetts, paying up to 120,000 bucks a year per position. Doesn't have to be full-time, you have two halftime positions, and there's 16 of these. The idea is primarily for schools. This is the emphasis of this, of the energy manager grant is they feel that, you know, of municipal buildings, schools are probably to more schools than most. So it's a, it's school oriented. Any district can apply for it. The idea of the program, if you go to Mass Save and take a look at the Municipal Energy Manager Grant, they have a very specific of job description. And, you know, in a nutshell, it's to develop an energy management plan for the district, implement energy saving opportunities, and realize those energy, energy savings opportunities with K through 12 schools being the emphasis. They will also make, will help to create funding, to find funding to whatever they decide to do. So example, something like this HVAC thing would be right up the alley for this person. The way it goes is since we are a regional school district, they may couldn't quite figure out how we as a district could do this with seven towns. But one of the things that, one of the entities that can apply to have an energy manager are regional planning commissions. So there is a Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. I did speak to the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, who said they knew about this grant. They were interested in it and they would pursue it. And the grant is actually due on January 31st, the application, one of the, it's competitive. There can be 16, it's due on the 31st of January. They're aware, they said they would do it. As they would, they would actually apply for this grant. They're, they they would probably need some data from participating communities. This, this, this assessment you talked about fits right into the kind of information they're looking for. So my feeling is, is it's, doesn't cost the district anything at all. It would also, the energy manager position that I believe that Berkshire Regional Planning Commission would actually hire would not be for Berkshire County. The minimum is five schools, which is what we are. It probably cover a couple of different districts, but it can cover the whole. But there are too many schools in the, in the entire Berkshires. So I believe I would think it'd be very handy if Leslie called up Berkshire Regional and said, hey, you know, we're a school district here. We're really quite interested in having this done for us. And it seems like there's no lose. If they don't get the grant, they don't get it. If they do, and we're part of the program. Lot of information, lot of expertise that we could get gratis.
Yeah. It does well with the, the evaluation that M A S C is doing.
That's right in.
Issues that we have, I think it's a great, but we can be part of it. Hey, that's cool.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to make a connection with them.
Yeah. Cool, great. Let's see. Anybody else mark something? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? You didn't adjourn. Yeah, I want to hear something.